I'm glad to hear another adult was.
I really liked it.
And your granddaughter?
Yeah.
Jim, there?
Oh. Hey, would you please tell him that you're not going to come here? He's supposed to be home today. He just called him.
Are we ready to roll? Okay. I now call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:01 PM. We'll now take a moment of silence to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll have the coordinator call the roll.
Present.
Mr. Rollins?
Here.
Ms. Scavano?
Here.
Mrs. McCullough?
Here.
Dr. Herner?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Mrs. Powers?
Here.
With seven present, we have a quorum.
I would like to, at this time, recognize our AV Assistant from Auburn High School, Sophia Dunn. Thank you for being here tonight and helping with the broadcast. At this time, we will now recognize and celebrate outstanding contributions of our students and staff, and we'll have Mr. Earl Dotson Jr. come to the microphone.
Good evening and thank you. And I'm not sure if he's here, but I'm going to read it anyway. Channel 13 W R E X recognized Ms. Carolyn Wright with its Teacher of the Week Award in October. One of Ms. Wright's students at Johnson Elementary School nominated her. Ms. Wright keeps everything her students make for her own, for her, over the years because of that special bond she creates with her class each year. She told W R E X, "I like to connect with the students and the parents. I'm basically more than a teacher. I like them to be able to come back, share experiences with me, tell me what they're doing in the future, and what their dreams are." Congratulations to Ms. Caroline Wright on your award. Please join me in congratulating her. She's here. As I said, I don't think she's here this evening, but I still want to make sure that we recognize her. We also want to recognize some students and some of their accomplishments this evening. Rockford Public Schools were well represented again this fall in several state tournaments. Eisenhower Middle Schools, Caitlin Salin, finished seventh in the state in girls' golf. Thurgood Marshall School had two students compete in the boys' state golf tournament. Jack Holmstrom came in 19th in the state, and Adam Kuhar came in 27th. Thurgood Marshall School also had three students compete in the boys' state cross-country meet. Adrian Jaroni, Quentin Nevenhoven, and Brandon Harmson. From Lincoln Middle School, Noah Friss qualified for the state meet. Noah unfortunately was unable to compete that weekend, but he still should be commended for qualifying and representing Lincoln. Five girls on Guilford's High School's tennis team reached the state tournament. Lily and Linnea Ensley, Carly Kasicki, Shannon Hallstein, and Nicole Christiansen. Lily and Linnea Ensley also received all-state honors, making the third all-state team. The Guilford team finished 19th at state. Emma Ly and Megan Medrata, did I say that right? Represented Auburn High School in the girls' state tennis tournament. Auburn's high school's Janelle Ferguson not only qualified for the state cross-country tournament, she set a new school record for running three miles in 17 minutes and 45 seconds. She broke the previous record of 18:05 set in 2004. And then add Auburn's freshman Madison Peterson led the RPS co-op girls' golf team to a first-place finish in the nick 10. She went on to win the sectional championship and finished fourth in the state in Class AA. We have many of those students, teachers, and their families here with us this evening. Please join me in giving them a wonderful round of applause for their accomplishments. Jordan Lynn from Guilford is here to accept the awards on behalf of Guilford. I know Jill Faber is also here, principal at Thurgood Marshall. Come on up. Augie is in the building. What's up, Augie?
That is all.
Thank you. Excellent job by everyone. We are now at the petitions and communications portions of our meeting when we invite the public to make comments. The First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees the rights of citizens to petition their government, as well as provides for freedom of speech. Also, the Illinois School Code requires that there be a time at regular and special meetings for public comment. Thus, we are following those mandates during this petitions and communication portion of our agenda. According to Board Policy 2.230, the public comments portion of the meeting is limited to 30 minutes. The Board will not respond to comments at this time. If it is appropriate, you will be contacted in a timely manner by staff in response to your questions. In order to allow sufficient time for the business of the Board and to conduct our meeting in an efficient way, we are requesting that you comply with the guidelines that are posted, and each speaker will be allowed no more than two minutes. It's not appropriate to address individual Board members or individual administrators or discuss matters that would otherwise be confidential in such open meetings. We only have one speaker tonight, and I'll have Allison Wang step forward, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. So, just to begin with, I would like to note some good things that I've read about and seen in the district. So, the four-year graduation rate increased from 64% to 68% in the past two years, and this really does seem like great news, and it's not to mention the past comments that we just honored. But the total number of graduates went from 1,383 to 1,399. That is 16% more students that graduated in 2014 than in 2013. Of course, I had to be reminded of the mobility rate, and the student mobility rate is 15%, and the students who dropped out of school are not included in the graduation rate. So, the higher mobility rate means that it's the better graduation rate. Numbers are just kind of fickle when you plug things into a formula. But again, I'm just going to gloss over that, and so now when we look at elementary schools, 11 schools increased or stayed the same in reading scores, and 19 schools decreased in reading scores. So, this means that 36% of elementary schools stayed the same or improved, and 63% of them decreased. This is more than half of schools seeing a decline, and out of these 19 schools, 18 of them decreased for the second year in a row. For example, one particular elementary school went from having 32% of its students meeting or exceeding state standards in reading in 2012 to having only 13% meet or exceed standards in 2014. This is just kind of alarming. What do we need to do to get those 87% of them ready for the following years? And just please do not write them off, and I just think that we should maybe direct some resources into these students. Thank you.
Are there any Board member comments at this time? Maybe a couple of comments? Yes. I first wanted to say that the new Facilities Oversight Committee met for the first time last week. We had a very good meeting, lasted about an hour and a half. We identified several areas that were consistent with what were, consistent with areas mentioned in the, both the motion that adopted the facilities plan, as well as the resolution to create the committee, areas such as ongoing maintenance, annual construction schedule, furniture for the new buildings, the plan for closing schools, looking at cash flow, and the overall tenure plan were some of the areas that we discussed. Our next meeting will be on November 25th at 7:00 PM, somewhere in this building, in the superintendent's conference room, on the fourth floor. So, and then I just wanted to, one other quick comment. Couple weeks ago, Auburn had their commit to graduate ceremony, and I just wanted to say it was really, I went over and attended it, and it was really a nice little ceremony. They had over 500 kids sign a banner and commit to graduation. I did not have a chance to meet the gentleman, but they had a nice speech by Coach Harris, who gave a really good message, and so it was a very nice event for the kids there. Thank you. Any other Board member comments? Okay, thank you. We are now at the consent portion of our agenda item, including the consent items for the meeting minutes of October 28th. Payroll, accounts payable, purchase orders, contracts under 10,000, air travel, IFB 15-12 Lincoln Middle School Asbestos Abatement Project, the recurring contracts of KMK Media, and SAS Star Autism Support, Inc., and other consent items, including the monthly investment report for September, the interest transfer from working cash for September, and the Freedom of Information law. Is there a motion and a second to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Ms. Powers. Are there any consent items that Board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Ms. Jackson?
7E, 8, 9, A, B.
7E, 8, 9, A and B. Any others? If not, I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the items, consent items not pulled.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Ms. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
I'll now take a motion and a second to approve Item 7E, Contracts Under 10,000.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Dr. Herner. Any questions or discussions for 7E? Now, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of Item 7E, Contracts Under 10,000.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Ms. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
And I'll take a motion and a second for the consent item number eight, the bid recommendations for Lincoln Middle School Asbestos Abatement?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Dr. Herner. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the bid recommendation for Lincoln Middle School.
Ms. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
Was it 9A and B, Ms. Jackson? Okay, so I'm going to do those separate. So, 9A, I'll take a motion and a second for the approval of the KMK Media contract.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Ms. Powers. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the KMK Media contract, recurring contract.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Ms. Scavano?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
And I'll take a motion for Item number 9B, which is the SAS Star Autism Support.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Connor?
Second.
Second by Dr. Herner. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of Item 9B, the Star Autism Support, Inc. contract.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Ms. Scavano?
Abstain.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses, one no, and one abstain.
Thank you. We are now at the closed session consent items, including the Memorandum of Understanding with REA Regarding Instructional Technology Integration Specialist Differential. The appointment of Angela Reiki as a 12-month principal at Wilson Aspire, the HR organizational report and addendum, and the closed session consent items, including the student discipline in which expelled or suspended students are prohibited from being on school grounds and school-sponsored activities without the written, prior written permission of the principal. The expulsions for the following students are held in abeyance contingent upon a CPA, a conditional probationary agreement, which is for student DJR 18, CFP 25, JAC 27, and the following student is expelled for the remainder of the school year for 2014, 2015. That is student LLY 28. And the following students have been granted a conditional probationary agreement. So, list here of students DKR 1, TLT 2, MOC 3, MLC 4, KMW 5, ALM 6, IM 7, LME 8, TB 9, JMB 10, DDC 11, BKC 12, AAC 13, DMH 14, DDJ 15, DGA 16, DJI 17, PSW 19, CMT 20, TNA 21, ISA 22, ARZ 23, MLB 24, and JTM 26. Is there a motion and a second to approve the closed session consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollins. Are there any items that any Board member would like to have pulled for separate consideration? Ms. Jackson? I'm sorry, Mr. Connor, did you have?
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Ms. Jackson?
Mrs. McCullough light was on before mine.
Okay. Ms. McCullough?
I'm just going to hope.
Okay.
Ask you to vote on 12 and 13 separate from those in 11.
On 12 separately, is that what you said?
All of them.
Okay, all right, okay. So, Item 12, okay? Are there any?
And 13.
And 13? Okay.
And then 11A.
11A, okay. Any others? Okay. I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the items not pulled, which would be 11B and 11C.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Ms. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Abstain.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one abstain.
Okay, I'll now take a motion and a second to approve Item 11A, which is the Memorandum of Understanding with the REA on Instructional Technology Integration Specialist Differential.
Oops, sorry.
Mr. Herner?
Second.
By Dr. Herner. Here is no discussion. So, I'll have the coordinator call the roll then on the approval of Item 11A.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Ms. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
Okay, I will take a motion and a second to approve Item 12, Student Discipline. Ms. Powers?
Second.
Second by Dr. Herner. There is no discussion. I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of Item 12, all those student discipline cases.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Ms. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Abstain.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses, one no, and one abstain.
And I'll take a motion and a second for Item number 13, the CPAs that I listed. Mrs. Powers?
Second.
Okay. Moved by, moved by Dr. Herner, second by Ms. Powers. There is no discussion. I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the CPAs listed under Item number 13.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Ms. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Abstain.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
The motion passes with five yeses, one no, and one abstain.
Thank you. We'll now move on to our next agenda item, which is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Jarrett?
Thank you. First of all, we'd like to highlight, this is a draft of the annual report. You're going to be able to see, we are doing a limited run of this, where it'll be available in some places, and it'll be available everywhere digitally as well. The communications team has worked really hard to highlight this, and I think it should be a really effective tool for communicating some of the things that are going well in the district, and some of the things we're continuing to strive to do. It captures the 1314 school year. In addition, I wanted to highlight my appreciation for the work that the community put in to be informed on the referendum issue, and the work that the Better Schools, Better Future Committee did as well. Nearly 75% of the voters spoke resoundingly in favor of the initiative, and now we have hard work to do with the newly minted Facilities Committee to make sure that we're working hard to move through the next phases of the process, which involves presenting a report in December 15, and looking forward to that work as well. And again, just appreciative for the involvement of the community. We had, I believe it was just under 35,000, somewhere between 33 and 35,000 voters that showed up and said yes, and were excited, and looking forward to moving on to the next step. Finally, I wanted to cede a moment of my time to our auditing group, Sickich, as well as Pete, Mr. Pete Keffer, to share a little bit about the delay on the presentation of the FY14 audit. So with that, I'll call up Mr. Keffer.
Good evening. Unfortunately, the FY14 audit has not been completed yet. We're very close, but just it wasn't ready to be presented tonight. We hired a new audit firm, Sickich, to do our audit for the next three years. There's been a learning curve on both their side and our side, you know, finding out what schedules they need, information they need, and for their, on their side, they need to understand our district and recreate all the financials. The audit started late. It was about three weeks later than what we had initially anticipated. We've got a lot of grants, a lot of adjustments need to be made, the allocations by fund, subs weren't charged in the right places. Two senior finance people went to a Sun Guard user conference two weeks ago, which delayed it. On the Sickich side, there was a death in the family of one of the key people there, and so anyway, lots of excuses, unfortunately, but we've got a good basis for going forward and getting the audit completed timely in the future. Very impressed with Sickich, the level of work that they're doing, how thorough they are. Carla Pascal is here, the senior financial, senior audit manager. Right now, the draft is being reviewed. It's in their final stages, working its way up on the Sickich side. We got our draft financials today. We're comparing it against our financials to make sure we're in sync, and we should have this submitted in the next few days. We have an extension with the state until next Wednesday to get this report submitted. So, the audit will be in your packets next Friday, and then they will be back to present in two weeks. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Keffer? Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to committee reports then. Ms. McCullough, you can proceed with the Education Committee report.
The Education Committee met in this room on Monday night, November, was it the 3rd? Seems so long ago, last week. Had quite a few items on our agenda. One of the first ones was a report submitted by the Communications Department. ones was a report submitted by the communications department on PACE, which stands for Parent and Community Engagement. Specifically, the purpose of that is to offer engagement opportunities for parents. So they've done 100, or they do that through PTO information nights, as well as through the District Parent Advisory Council, which has expanded this year in numbers, although one of their goals is to make sure that they have a representative from each school, and they're still working on that. They're also cultivating community partnerships to connect the schools with their community resources. They actually are monitoring 40 community partnerships at this time. There was some conversation about the Society of Automotive Engineers, who are doing a world in motion at Froberg, and as well as some of the other opportunities that are out there, such as the iRead, which has expanded now to students at Ellis and Kishawaki. Their goal is to always, of course, increase the number of volunteer hours and recruit more volunteers. Currently, we have 3,905 volunteers who have served 14,033 hours. I didn't write down the amount of money that saves us. I don't know, Mr. Dotson, if you have that on tip of your tongue, but it was like $27 an hour is what it's figured on, on a national basis. So I'll let everybody else add that up. There was a little bit of conversation about background checks for our volunteers and follow-up background checks, and I think we had a good discussion about all those, and we moved on to an assessment update, which was given by Ms. Jacobson. And when we say assessment update, we're talking about all the different tests that our students take throughout the course of the year. We assess differently, middle, elementary, middle, and high school. And so what I'm just gonna share with you are the changes that we've had from last year's report, when they were brought to us, all the assessments that were done. The writing assessment in elementary school is now optional, and they're only doing the benchmark testing in grades two through five. Middle school, they've removed the scholastic reading inventory, and at the high school, they've made the English Common Formative Assessment optional. I think the most important part, after we heard about the tests or the assessments, whichever corresponds better to your language, is the fact that there is ongoing work and communication with the teachers and through instructional council and with the REA to see, to determine what additional changes they may need for the next year. In addition, we have a new group, we vote on this, the Pyro Joint Committee, which has teachers who are involved, and they're going to be determining or working with the district to determine what tests they think are important, appropriate, useful. There was some conversation about the cost benefit, and it's not really a cost to the students, but the benefit of their time testing as compared to time in instruction, and the fact that the instruction is determined in part by the testing and where the students are benchmarking and the work that they're doing. So I think the best piece out of that was just the fact that the district is working together with the REA, and they're working with the teachers, and everybody's working collaboratively to try to determine the best assessments for our students, and that are most worthwhile for teachers as well in planning their curriculum and instruction. We had the report on the state, from the state, on our, what our improvements are, our school report card, so to speak, and the standardized test scores. The report was given to us that a majority of the schools have made gains in 2014 in the annual standardized test. 73% of the schools tested showed positive growth trends or maintenance in math compared to 2013. But the district composite data is flat from 2013 to 14 exams. 41% of the RPS students tested in the spring of 2014 are meeting or exceeding college readiness standards compared to 40.5% in the spring of 2013. Graduation rates, I'm just gonna give you 2012, it was 62%. 2013, it was 64%. And 2014, it was 68%, trending in a great direction. As we heard earlier from a speaker, we do also, in this committee, had conversation about the fact, the effect on those numbers when you factor in mobility of our student population. We've also seen an increase in our attendance rates. In 2012, it was 92%, flat at 92% in 2013, and it was 94% in 2014. So it was a positive report. We then heard just an update on the bilingual program. Our bilingual program, I know a lot of people, when you hear the word bilingual program, will probably think of our program that we have in our classrooms, where our Latino students are working on both, in both languages, but our bilingual program really reaches out to more populations than just that. We have the traditional, the transitional bilingual education program. We have a dual-language program. We have a traditional program of instruction. We have newcomers. We have 40 languages in the district that we have to meet the needs of students who come in. One of the largest representative populations is Karen, Corinne, thank you so much. So that department is doing a lot more than just working with that one specific bilingual program. We did change the model, or they changed the model based on a lot of research this past year as to how we'll work with our students in the classroom where we have the separate bilingual classrooms, and to have a separate classroom, and somebody can correct me, but you have to have at least 20 students speaking one language to have, I'm gonna look at legal to make sure I have this right, to have that separate classroom in one location. They have to be in one building. So one of the things that has changed is previously, students would test every year, and we did talk about the tests during the meeting, the different tests that are, that the students are given. But if the students did well enough on the test, they were moved out of the bilingual and into a monolingual classroom. And based on the research, it's been demonstrated that if they're, have the opportunity to stay in that program, that they do better as they learn to read, and both in literacy as well as numeracy, if they're doing it in their native language simultaneously. So our district has made the commitment to allow those students to stay in there, and last year, or this year is the first year they're doing that, and it started with the second grade, and it will roll up through the grades. And this is an option. Parents are given the opportunity to have their students, if they test, to move out or stay in. But there's been a lot of professional development with our teachers this year. I was reminded, encouraged to state in fact that, how wonderful it is for our students to be able to, I mean, what a skill it is to have that bilingual. The rest of the world is bilingual, I think, except for America, and so for these students to be able to truly be bilingual and literate, both numeracy and literacy is an important skill, and it's not one to be looked down upon. The professional development, most of that is being paid out of grants. I think all of it was being paid out of grants, actually. And the teachers, our principals, are incorporating the strategies they're learning in those sessions to support the current research and strategies as we move forward. We also had a report from Ms. Weatherly on something that we saw at the board level at our previous board meeting, but we brought it back to committee just to have further conversation, and that was something called career cruising. And it's some software that basically has three components. It is on our action item list tonight, so we can have further conversation then, but basically, it sounded like it was really an important component of helping our registration process in the high schools, as well as helping students, or formalizing the process for students who are designing their high school curriculum, and those who are designing what they're going to do post-graduation, what kind of scholarships are out there, and making sure that we have some continuity across the district, so that one school doesn't, for example, I remember when my kids were in school, I don't remember, know if you guys, there was the gray drawer in the counselor's office, and that's where all the scholarship applications were, and you had to kind of file through them, and some schools had more than other schools. And so we want to have some continuity across the district, and this program will help us do that. So we'll be revisiting that a little bit later, but that came through committee with support after having the questions answered. And there was one more item on. We started to have a conversation, and I'm actually going to cede the floor to Ms. Powers, because I apologetically had to leave during the last item, and that was a conversation about heart rate monitor pilot program.
Thank you. Tyler Fagan presented the heart rate monitor for the third time, if you're counting. And he had some teachers and a student talk about their experience with using the heart rate monitors, and what he was asking for, what he presented, was money to do another pilot. And there was lots of discussion, just even around the term pilot, because we had done a pilot at RISA, plus students were using it at elementary, middle school, and high school this fall. So we didn't understand exactly why he was calling it a pilot. And so the long and the short of it was that the equipment that was used at RISA had limitations, and so there wasn't any data accumulated from the experience at RISA. And the request was for monitors that would work when the students are outside and have a longer range than what was previously purchased. It went to a vote, and it failed, really because there was not any data. While the students' testimony was compelling, and the teachers' experience and their testimony was also interesting, there really wasn't any data to guide the discussion for pretty significant dollars. And so I'm not sure where it's headed from there, but it did not get recommended to move out of Ed Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Powers, and thank you for taking over that committee at the end of the evening. Our next meeting, which goodness sakes, I think I left after three hours, so I don't know, we're hoping will be, we know we'll be in this room on December 1st, which is Monday at 5:30. And if you want to check the agenda, it's always on Board Docs, under the library tab, Education Committee, and that will be posted the week before we meet.
Thank you. Mr. Rollins, the Operations Committee report.
Operations Committee met here on Tuesday, November 4th, at 5:30 PM. We reviewed a proposal for a new stop-loss contract for our health insurance, group health insurance program. We'd be moving to a new stop-loss provider, which would save us some money. That was approved. The recommendation was approved by the Operations Committee, and I just realized it's marked on the Operations Committee as being a board agenda item, but we don't have it on the board agenda, so I'm gonna put Mrs. Burke on the spot here and ask why that's not on the board agenda.
My fault.
Okay. So that'll be coming at a future board meeting, I assume. We also looked at the KMK Media and Chartwell Agency contracts that were proposed by the administration. One of those, we approved under the consent agenda as a continuing contract. The other's coming up under new business, or an action item, I'm not sure which. After some discussion and some explanation by Mr. Dotson as to the purpose behind those contracts, I think those were both unanimously recommended for approval by the Operations Committee. Mr. Dotson then gave an update on the Let's Talk system that the district purchased and implemented. They did a soft rollout for a month. They've had probably a hard rollout for the past two months, and he provided us some statistics as to what they're seeing in terms of users, what sorts of users they're seeing, and some of the statistics as far as response rates within the district. We then got to the, an update on the funding options for the facilities plan. There was quite a bit of discussion about that, and so I want to spend a little bit of time on that. So we, the community approved $139 million in general obligation bonds, of which we decided to do, to issue those in two different sets. So we've issued $100 million worth of those bonds. We still have $39 million worth to issue. And so the discussion really is about the timing of when to issue those bonds. There's another $18 million in health, life, safety bonds that are gonna be issued in January. We'll be going forward with those regardless. The question really is whether we should be issuing the $39 million at the same time, or if we should put that off. And the, I'm gonna try to summarize what could be a fairly complex subject, but the issue really is, we don't need the $39 million right now, but we will need it within the time period in which we're allowed to use it. There doesn't seem to be any question about that. If we issue the bonds in January, there will be approximately, it's estimated $1.5 million in interest costs incurred before we actually use them. If we wait to issue them, we might save those $1.5 million in costs. And I just actually clarified this evening with Ms. Noble from Stiefel Nicholas, who's here. That is actually, we would incur that extra interest, because if we issue the bonds a year later, we would probably shorten the terms on those bonds, shorten the term on those bonds, so that they become due at the same time as the rest. So we would save that $1.5 million in interest. There are two risks that were identified if we wait to issue the bonds. One is the interest risk. So there is a risk that interest rates will rise between now, when they are very low, and historically low, and when we actually issue the bonds. There was a lot of discussion about the fact that nobody's got a crystal ball, but it appears that over the next year, there is very little interest rate risk. Most economists do not expect interest rates to rise over the next year. The probably, potentially larger risk is what was referred to as credit risk. Our, the interest rate that we pay is partly a function of our bond rating. And you may recall that just before we issued the original $100 million in bonds, we went into the rating agency, Standard and Poor's, and we actually got our rating improved. It was upgraded, which resulted in a lower interest rate. And so there are all sorts of things that potentially could happen over the next year that could negatively affect that. We will have to be rerated. Ms. Noble indicated that she thought if we went in to get rerated now, that she thinks there's a very good chance we would keep our current rating. If we wait for another year to go in to be rerated, there are all sorts of things that could happen. The financial condition of the state of Illinois could change. There could be legislation at the state level that could hurt us or could help us, either way. You know, certainly, if the pension obligations get shifted to us, that's gonna have an effect. If the school funding formula changes, that could have an effect. If the general state of the state of Illinois deteriorates, that could have an effect. And really, that's an area where nobody has a crystal ball, and nobody, I think, is even making any predictions. So we had a really good discussion, and at the end of that discussion, nobody wanted to make a motion either way. So there was a discussion that the board is gonna have to make that decision. Now, it is not on the agenda as an action item. There does not appear to be a recommendation from the administration. And so I am simply giving the report of the Operations Committee. Ms. Noble is here from Stiefel Nicholas. I think this would be the only opportunity for her to speak and answer questions, so if you don't mind, I guess I'd invite her to the podium, and she can answer any questions that anybody might have on this topic.
I think Mr. Rollins did a phenomenal job.
Okay.
So I possibly don't need to say a word, but I am happy to answer any questions. He has very thoroughly described, we did, the Operations Committee did evaluate and discuss this at two separate meetings, and looked at quite a bit of data. I think they've given this a lot of consideration. There is no one black or white correct answer here, because it all depends on what happens over the next year. So this has to just be a gut call for the board. We are proceeding with the $18 million of health, life, safety bonds regardless, because those projects have to be funded from health, life, safety bond proceeds. But the question is whether we proceed with the balance of the voted bonds now or wait. And the waiting doesn't have to be a year. It can be six months. It could be a year. It could be 18 months. But we do need to decide sometime soon, because we are selling bonds in January, whether that will include the $39 million of remaining voter-authorized bonds or not.
Does the cost significantly change in January if we only do the 18 versus the 39? Or how does the cost?
The actual cost of selling the bonds? Yeah, but not substantially. Every time you sell bonds, you do incur certain fixed costs, which are mostly legal fees and the bond rating fee itself. That would be the bulk of those costs. And if you split the bonds into two instead of one, you are incurring between $40,000 and $50,000 of additional expense.
I had a question on timing. I think I heard you say that it takes two months to make, from the point of the decision to sell the bonds to actually doing the sale of the bonds.
Right, if everybody's really hustling.
Right, and so we need at least two months, then lead time or whatever.
Yes.
So if we were going to put it off for six months, we really need to decide that within four months, roughly. Is that correct?
That's a fair statement, yes.
So if it takes two months, it's not on the agenda today, are we too late for January?
We are already doing all the preparation work, okay? Because you're selling bonds regardless in January. It's just a question of whether we're selling 18 million or some amount larger than that, up to 57 million. The prep work for any bond issue is the same, whether it's just the 18 million or all the way up to the 57 million. So the preparation that we're doing right now applies regardless. As far as, I would defer to Lori on what legal steps she would need to take to make it happen and follow your guidelines. We will need official Board approval of the bonds in January, but that's the official legal approval of the sale of the bonds to put the bonds on the levy.
Haven't we done that already?
No.
We're specifically talking about the health, life, safety bonds. The GO, the GO bonds, general obligation funds, were approved in 2012, so this is specifically a need for authorization. We certainly want Board input on timing in terms of when the Board recommends that we would sell the remaining GO bonds, but we have not brought forth to the Board the health, life, safety bonds. As you recall, a few meetings back, Mr. Schmidt, we asterisked the specific amendments that would be covered. And it's really prudent for us to, as quickly as possible, move forward with the health, life, safety bond and spend the money that is restricted first and money that has more flexibility later. So these health, life, safety bonds that we're looking to sell would be very specifically tied to specific projects that are approved by the state of Illinois.
Mr. Rollins?
Just to specifically address Mrs. McCulloch's question, we were given a schedule for the bonds for the health, life, safety bond issuance, and I think what we had talked about, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we would need to know the amount by the projected early January meeting with the rating agency. So that's sort of the driver. Everything else is going to be pretty much the preparatory work that Ms. Noble was referring to. It has to be done regardless. We're just going to have to know the amount of the bond issue by early January, which would give us the opportunity, if that's the direction we want to go, of making a decision in December. But obviously, time's getting short, and so if somebody, if this is going to be a recommendation of the administration, then, you know, it needs to get onto the agenda as an action item so that we can discuss it.
Ms. McCulloch, I don't know if that answered your question or not. Did it?
I guess then it just leads to another, which is, will the administration be bringing forth a recommendation? When will the administration be bringing forth a recommendation?
My understanding is for the health, life, safety bonds, once, as approval comes in from the ISBE, when we specifically know what we can sell the bonds for in January is when we'd be bringing them. At this point, I believe we are, that's not something that would come back to the Board for formal approval. That's something that, and at this point, based on our internal conversations, I believe we're waiting on the GO bonds for a little while and focusing on the health, life, safety bonds.
Ms. Holden?
The Board has already approved the sale of the GO bonds. This is really just a timing issue, so the input or guidance at the Board meeting would be appropriate, but there's no action to take because you've already approved the sale. It's now administration is figuring out the timing of it with the Board input.
Okay.
So I guess I'm confused why Operations Committee was having a conversation about it if we're not going to be, what they kicked back to the Board was just the health, life, safety, Mr. Rollins, or was it?
No, I mean.
I was hearing you say it was.
We had the full discussion, and it was certainly my understanding that we were talking about it because we were being asked for our opinion, and it was going to be coming to the Board.
But it's not going to be coming to the Board.
Well, I'm not clear on that. So it's not coming to the Board?
Not for action.
I don't think it's a legal requirement, it's not a legal requirement that the Board vote on this matter, but certainly it is an advisory question.
It was important, from my perspective, it was important to get advisory input both from the Operations Committee as well as the Board on the timing of the GO, on the sale of the GO bonds. And we also tied that in with what we do need approval for, which is the health, life, safety bonds.
Mr. Connor?
I think the essence of the conundrum for Operations to answer Mrs. McCulloch's question was, do we really think that the risk of waiting is greater than the risk of incurring 1.5 million and then essentially not needing the 39 million in the short term? And I think nobody was willing to say one of the other. The one comment I've got is, there's obviously a lot of risks on this, but I think the essence of it is, if we don't need it right now and we know for a fact we'll save 1.5 million by not issuing the 39, I think, from my point of view, you know, we should tilt a little bit more in that direction because there are so many things from the risk side, but those are always there, no matter what we do. And I think having the savings of the 1.5 million, from my point of view, does make sense. I'd be willing to go any way the Board wants on that if there was a compelling case. I just think, right now, I'm not hearing that we truly need that money. And so therefore, what I would say is, if you're looking for advisory, and it's just my own opinion, is, in the short term, if we can save some money, because we can always kick ourselves on a lot of decisions on the back end, but knowing that we will save that money upfront, I think, makes sense.
Let me just make the one clarifying statement, though, which is, you will save 1.5 million if interest rates are exactly where they are today a year from now. So that's the.
Right.
And our bond rating stays the same.
And your bond rating stays the same.
All variables have to stay the same. Changing.
There's no doubt, I'll just say that there's no doubt, there's all kinds of assumptions in here, but rates can do a lot of things. And I think, as Mr. Rollins well put it, the economists from that end are saying rates are probably less of a risk than the credit rating. But I think there's so many factors in that one. The only reason, and I'm not counting on the 1.5, but I think even if you're within, say, 5% or some number below or above, I think it's still a number that you know you are going to save some money in that sense. So I don't know. We are living with a risk in that sense. It's just, we know it's money that will be saved. So I would say, from my point of view, unless there's a compelling reason somebody wants it, that we do what we're doing, which is, we're punting on the decision, and we think about what the timing is. That would be, from my point of view, what Operations should talk about. If we're not going to do it now, when would we recommend doing it? And that's a discussion, I think, that we should have, probably on the facility side, to see what kinds of demands would drive some kind of other date.
Ms. McCulloch?
Because we're going to need the 39 million. It's just a matter of when we issue them. You went to Operations, you got their opinion, you want the Board's opinion or advice, but it's not on here anywhere to ask our opinion or advice. So I would reiterate then my question, when are you going to come back and ask us, or is that the purpose of this conversation? Now that I understand that we don't have to take an official vote, but you're saying you do want the opinion. Are you going to bring it back? Or is this it?
I think at this point, we wanted to have people, have the Board weigh in, and as we get closer to making the decision, after we've heard from the Board, we would, as we get ready to actually sell those GO bonds, then we would probably come back to the Board again at that point, again. But I, yeah, I'm just really looking to hear if there are strong opinions, one way or the other, about now, or, you know, tie it in with January, or if the Board is comfortable with that risk of waiting.
And you're looking for those opinions one-on-one when we meet with you, have conversation, or does anybody else want to chime in here?
No, it's fine. Everyone in the Operations Committee felt very comfortable sharing their opinion.
Okay. I'll share. It was all in a circle.
I'll share my opinion. I think the time is now because we have a good bond rating, and that's a good reason to do it. And we would take a risk if the bond rating changed, and we would pay more. So I would lean towards doing it in January. That's my opinion.
In listening to the Operations dialogue, what I would say, I guess I personally would need a little bit more cash flow analysis. Everybody was throwing around, we've got a lot of money in the bank right now, so we don't need it, but I would want to understand a little bit, I would like to segregate out a little bit, the Operations and the Facilities cash flow versus regular Operations cash flow, so that we're not counting monies twice or using monies, because there's Operations cash flow that's funding this facilities plan, and there's, you know, monies committed that are going to be paid out over the next few months, there's plans and bids that are going out. So I would personally need a little bit more cash flow analysis for my own accounting self to fully be able to make a decision.
Ms. Powers?
Sure, I'll weigh in. I concur with you, Mr. Scavano. I think that, based on the information that I have, I think that there is a higher risk with our bond rating, and so, and without having had the financial audit, I would rather do it in January.
Anybody else need to share a thought? Okay. Mr. Rollins, you want to continue your report?
Sure. We received the, thank you, Mrs. Noble, by the way. We received the Fall Housing Report from Mr. Schmidt. I'll give you, I think, three very high-level indicators. We have numbers over the past five school years. If you look at all students, total all students, we're down about 500 students over the past five years. Some of those students, no, I'm sorry, that wouldn't make any, after you pull out the charter students, we're down probably about 700 students, maybe 800 students. One of the interesting things, one of the interesting numbers here is that there are actually fewer students year over year in the charters this year than there were last year. This is the first year that's happened. So we saw steady growth in the charter enrollment until this year, and it's actually dropped about 110 students. And then our kindergarten enrollment is down about 140 year over year. I don't know if, how many of you saw the article in the newspaper last Sunday or a couple of Sundays ago? Enrollment is down in the private schools as well, so it's not like we're losing them to the private schools. So this is most likely a demographic trend in Rockford, and we're just seeing our population, at least our student age population, decline over time. We got, we received a facilities master plan update from Mr. Schmidt, and I think this was probably the last Facilities or Operations Committee meeting where we'll get that at the Operations Committee. I think that's being transitioned over to the Facilities Committee, thank goodness. Mr. Schmidt, I don't know if there were any highlights that you'd like to share with us from that?
No. No, I don't think there was really too much on there. Just showed some progress of the field houses, the library renovations, and auditorium renovations at some of the high schools. We have some bids that are being awarded. Next week, we have a couple boiler replacement projects at Auburn and Guilford that we'll be bringing to the next Board meeting. Where our total committed so far is about $92 million in projects. We have about $123 million that are still out there that have yet to be committed for various types of work. Other than that, there's pretty much not much going on, other than winding down our projects, and Guilford will be opened up here in a couple of weeks. Fieldhouse, it is.
We did look at the schedule of bids that are planned, construction work for the next season that's being planned. And one of the discussion points that we had is that there is a feeling, there are a lot of construction projects that are being planned for downtown Rockford over the next 18 months. And there's a potential for a tightening in the labor pool in the construction trades in Rockford, which is then going to drive prices up. So, and we've had that discussion, the administration's aware of that, our project manager is certainly aware of that. And so we certainly need to try to keep this next construction schedule on track, get those bidding documents out, and get those jobs bid as quickly as possible, because the later that slides, if it does slide, the more likely that the prices are going to go up for us. And then, just under New Business, Mr. Schmidt reported that he'll have a capital, a maintenance and capital refreshment schedule ready for us to take a look at at first draft in December. And we also had discussions with Mr. Lewis about continuing to look at a contract administration system. And that's the report of the Committee. The next Committee meeting will be Tuesday, December 2nd, at 5:30 PM here in this room.
Okay, thank you. Our first action item tonight is the Facility Master Plan Construction Schedule. Mr. Rollins?
I'd like to move to implement the previously approved facilities plan in accordance with the proposed timeline.
Second.
Second by Mr. Connor. Are there any questions or discussion on the Facility Master Plan schedule? Mr. Rollins?
Well, the first is not a question, it's really a comment. We've had this discussion at the Operations Committee before, that it really is critical that, once we get this approved, that we start getting signs or placards or information in the individual schools, telling people what's going to happen to their schools and when. I was just having a conversation with Mr. Connor before the open session about some rumors that are going around about Cherry Valley, which are not true. But even beyond that, I think it would be really nice for parents and students and staff members to be able to look and see, okay, here's what's planned for my building, here's when it's going to happen. So, you know, if we approve this tonight, then I hope that we do that as quickly as possible. I did have some questions, some of which, well, I think all of which I've already talked to Mr. Schmidt about, but I just want to have an open conversation about them. I was concerned, and one of the reasons I phrased my motion the way I did, that there was work that I know is in the facilities plan that doesn't really show up on the schedule. Now, Mr. Schmidt has explained to me how he thinks that it's going to be accomplished or how it is in the schedule. But one of those categories is electrical. There's very, very little in the schedule about electrical work. And when we sold the bonds to the public, not sold the bonds to the public, but when we sold the concept of the bonds to the public, one of the things that we talked about over and over again was our inadequate electrical systems in our buildings, the fact that we didn't have enough outlets in the classrooms, and that that was one of the things that we needed to address district-wide. And in the schedule that's been presented, there's only one building that is specifically called out for getting classroom outlets, and that's Jefferson. So, Mr. Schmidt, maybe you can explain how that's actually going to occur, how we'll actually be upgrading the outlets in each of the classrooms.
Yes, part of the electrical, it's, there's multicomponents in that. With the electrical, just to provide simple outlets in the classroom, first, we have to upgrade the service to the panel, plus then we have to take that hallway panel and upgrade the service into the building with the main panels, or we have to bring in more power to the building. So as we looked at it, like Johnson, when we upgraded the addition and put the addition out there for the cafeteria and the kitchen and the resource room, we upgraded the service to that building. We also upgraded the panels in the boiler room to that building. So that was one component of the electrical. When we're looking at the UNIVENTS that's out to bid right now for Johnson Elementary School, since we have to upgrade the electrical to, for the new UNIVENT controller for the fan motors, we have to upgrade the panels in the hallway. Since we already have the electrical contractor out there, and, I'm sorry, the engineer and the architect out there doing the survey in the individual classrooms, they surveyed each of the classrooms of which rooms needed electrical outlets. So as a result, Johnson's going to get approximately 63 or 64 outlets in each of the classrooms, which are dual outlets. So it's, our electrical is just not called out for one particular project that's electrical upgrades in the classrooms for outlets. It's in, we blend it in with some of the other projects. One, we get the economies of scale since we already have contracted. One, we get the economies of scale, since we already have contractors out there doing some of the work. Like at Guilford, when we updated the UNI vents out there this summer, those hallway panels were updated at the same time. So those panels are ready to go, so when we come back there, and we can put some additional outlets. And I think we did do some outlets with Guilford. How many, I'm not quite sure. But that's kind of how we work with the electrical. It's not just a specific project for those outlets in the classroom, we blended in with some of the other products, all work that we do out there.
Mr. Connor, do you have a question?
Mr. Rollins done? Okay. First, to what the point Mr. Rollins brought up, it's a good one, and that is, in addition to showing this schedule by school, one of the things Mr. Schmidt and I have talked about, and I hope is a reality pretty soon, is that we will effectively update the sites for each school, so when people are out on their school website, they can see the schedule, they can see, there's been a prototype that shows how much money, the scheduling, and I think that will help a lot, because now people will go to the same place, they don't have to go someplace special. So I think that's one thing that will help the communication with the local schools. Another thing that I'll say is, having walked through a number of schools with Mr. Schmidt, I think the process is actually quite good in the communication with the local buildings. And the example I'll use as we walk through Swan Hillman, and I think there was some issues with the way the grounds are laid out, and the discussion with the principal, and she was reaching out to staff in particular, to get their opinions on this. So I think I'm very comfortable that as you look at the schedule, and as we talk about these issues on the Oversight Committee, a lot of these points will come out. So one of the things I'll say is, for communication to the buildings, that a lot of this is built in. I think the architects are spending time also. So I think there's been a lot of thought to this, reaching out to teachers in particular. So commend you for that. The third thing I'll say is, one of the things that's really improved, and I know we've said this a couple times, is I hope the public does take some time to look at the kinds of reporting that are now out there. There's been a lot of work to show all kinds of metrics, and I think we're going to use a lot of those metrics as the basis for the standard reporting, and all the categories, whether it's furniture, the cash flow, there's all kinds of standard categories, and a lot of the basis has been built through the current reporting. So really, high marks from my point of view on the kind of organization and the kind of metrics that's being produced on these. So I think one of the issues has always been, is this transparent enough, and do we have the right information? So the first point is, there's been a lot of reaching out upfront to the schools. Second is, that the actual input to the architects has come directly from the building. And then third is, that the reporting on all this is going to be much more comprehensive, transparent, and we're obviously always looking for suggestions, but I just, from my point of view, those are three things that are very positive trends. And so frankly, I'm looking forward to, the individuals, by the way, on the Facilities Committee, I think were very engaged in our first meeting, and I really, I think, a lot of very positive things are going to come out of this. And then communication across the board can always improve, but I think we're on the right track.
Ms. McCullough?
So bouncing back to Mr. Rollins' question about the electrical being captured, you're saying, when you were doing the UNI vents, and when you were doing the addition and the new panels. So fiscally, that money was included in the estimates that, I mean, the expectation was all that electrical would be in those pieces?
Yes, when you look at the plan, I think we have seven or, Paul, you got that list right there? About seven, seven and a half million of electrical categorized for that. So when we look at the project, and we have something like this where we have electrical for that building, we look at the line item we have for electrical, initially what we put it in there. Yes, and that's included in the electrical. So when we put that out to bid, we have X amount for the HVAC work, we look at the estimate, we have, say, $100,000 for electrical work, so we put that in the whole bid package there as our estimate.
So it's being captured, and it's my expectation, Mr. Hunter and Mr. Connor, that the committee will be looking at that oversight. This is how much we budgeted for that, did we stay in? If not, it was because we needed more electrical, it wasn't captured, it wasn't expected. So that wouldn't be, you know, at our level at operations, but that would be at your committee. And that brings me to my second point. One of the reasons that we delayed the vote on this was because we wanted to have referendum pass, if we, you know, it would change the schedule. The way the schedule currently reads, it says new elementary school number one is on there. So what I, when we did our resolution about new schools, and the Facilities Oversight Committee and the like, was that in 2015, after looking how the money was spent over the next year and so many months, that a recommendation would come to the board whether or not it was fiscally that we were able to build new schools as compared to doing an addition. How we word whatever you're going to put out at the sites to instruct parents and families what the schedule is, I think is very important. I think you just mentioned that there's a question out at Cherry Valley, White Swan. If we put something up that talks about a new school, and their timeline for their new school, and then the Oversight Committee looks at the budgets and the numbers and says, hey, you know, there's, we're coming up short, and there's not going to be enough money, we'll have made a promise that's not there, and so we can't have that expectation. So I think it's inherent in this, in my vote anyways, is that we're truly honest with people, so that they can't come back and say, but you told us, or it's in writing, I took a screenshot. So part of this is how we communicate that with regard to the new schools, because at this point in time, we have not, as a board, by voting for this schedule, we are not committing to spending money on new schools. Are we legal? We're just committing to say, if we get to that date, and...
And this is why I'm really confused, because I've looked at the motion, and it's not really saying you're voting on the schedule either. So I'm not sure what the board's intent is, if they're trying to, in order for administration to carry out that intent, and to ensure that we have clear language in the minutes to document what the intent of the board is, I think that clarification has to occur, because the motion itself was to implement the previously approved facilities plan in accordance with the proposed timeline. So I think if, remember, Rollins can provide that clarification, and maybe it's just me, but if administration understands what that intent is, then it doesn't really matter, except for your board coordinator needs to document in the minutes what exactly the intent is too, so that we can carry it out, or refer back when necessary.
So, in line, I guess, with what Mrs. McCullough was just saying, I mean, my intention was to make it clear that we have a previously approved facilities plan. We're not amending that facilities plan by adopting this timeline. All we're doing is telling the administration to go ahead and use this proposed timeline in the implementation of the facilities plan that's already been approved. So there's no substantive, there's no substantive revision to the proposed facilities plan. All this is, is the timeline. Well, it does, but that's why our previously approved facilities plan included the contingencies. Correct. Which is why I included that language.
Okay, so is that clear for you, your minutes?
We're accepting.
No, that's not the motion.
No. It should be accepting, not approving. Current motion right now is approving, and we want to change it to accepting, is what we're...
No, it's completely different.
No, okay.
So that's, it's completely different from what administration was seeking about...
I move to implement the previously approved facilities plan in accordance with the proposed timeline.
Got it? Mr. Connor, did you have another comment or question?
The one comment I'll have is, that obviously, we had put two things in motion. One is that the referendum would be approved, which it was, and the second is, that in December of 2015, the committee would make a recommendation. So I'm not sure why there's confusion, but the fact is that you have to plan these things, whether they essentially occur or not, because for virtually everything but the new schools, we've put that in motion, so you have to plan that out. And you cannot, from a construction standpoint, sensibly think of what a plan is, and not include the possibility of those new schools, given everything we've had. So from my point of view, I'm not sure, you know, what the question is, because all we're doing is, we're looking at a schedule for planning, and it's December of 2015 that we'll say whether we have both the money and the desire to go ahead with, frankly, what's been approved in a referendum, and what we're, you know, looking at, so.
I think, from the way it's presented, that I'm not sure if the intent is even to start planning even for any, the possibility of new schools. Is that correct?
Well, I think the plan that was previously approved by the board specifically said that they should not expend any money.
Right, but it didn't, that's not...
But it doesn't say we can't, they can't plan.
That's right, it didn't say you can't make plans, you can't spend money.
That's a difference, though, because you'd have to use outside architects and others in order to plan, so you won't be able to do that. So that's what I, why I really wanted the clarification, to ensure that administration understands what they can and can't do.
Ms. Powers, you had a quick question?
Let's, just before we get off this, I think you've got a technical, legal version of the word "plan" that, you know, and I want to make sure that, because I think you can set a direction, and whatever term you would like to call that, you can't ignore that as you go forward and lay this out, which is what we've had a long, this documentation isn't different than what we've had for a long time.
I think the intent is to ensure there's no money spent on the planning, which would, when you're planning, you would usually, and Mr. Schmidt can verify this, you would get involved outside architects, and you would spend other fees associated with that. So that's why it's critical that the intent of what the board is trying to do is made very clear to administration, so that they don't hire outside architects or other outside entities to provide that assistance in planning for the possibility of the new schools.
And just to log that dead horse one more time, we did pass it and say, you can't spend money, and I'm just, I'll be particular about language right back at you, is, planning does not necessarily equate to spending money, depending on what you're doing. And if you look at the schedule, all it says is, here's the direction of where we're going. You don't have to spend money to do that, Mr. Schmidt in his office could do that. And so...
Can you be more specific what you're talking about in planning? That doesn't cost money?
So if you look at the schedule, what money did it take to put this together? Is it internal money of doing photocopies? Is that what we're talking about, or?
Planning time.
I'm sure we had Ragnar Benson involved in this.
Well, our whole staff was involved. I was involved, our project management team, our program manager was involved creating the schedule, and this document that you have right there in front of you, or the electronic version of it.
Ms. Powers, you had your light on.
Thank you. So I just wanted to put out there the conversation, Mr. Schmidt, that you and I had two minutes before the board meeting, because I think it's pretty exciting, and as you look ahead to the schedule, and the number of windows that we are going to be replacing, could you just kind of report on the East Energy Bill?
Oh, I told Board Member Powers, I was just sitting here, since East, we have full implementation of those windows from December of last year, comparative that against one of the other schools that really go neck and neck, and it's almost about an 18%, 20% reduction in natural gas from December of last year to a couple days ago. So it shows that the new windows are really doing, exceeding, right about the 15%, 18% which we anticipated, so they're doing really well out there.
So my point in bringing that out, then, is I wanted to make sure that, I'm assuming that those kind of economies and this schedule are reflected in the budget, that when we've got a ton of schools having windows replaced in the summer of 2015, that then, that following year, we could expect to see, I mean, if it were one building, probably not, but we've got a bunch happening that summer. So are those savings being reflected in the budget? And when the facilities team is looking at cash flow and our ability to spend money, what do we know about savings and how that's being projected into the budget?
As we develop our budget every year for the Fund 20, for the Operations and Maintenance Fund, we have X amount of money in there that we have committed in the capital to this facilities plan. Anything else that we get in there through the operational savings, we'll take there and use to reinvest back into the buildings through other energy efficiency measures, or improved deferred maintenance, that we still have some things out there, and just general maintenance within the buildings.
Okay, because I think that that's, that is an indicator of our return on investment for this community, and I just think to kind of be able to report that back on a regular basis, that this is paying off. We are seeing savings.
That will be one thing that will be in there, part of the facility test, but that was one of the areas that we've looked at, that we'll start reporting on those when we get some actual datas. We have one project that we're working on right now, of all the lighting that we've changed in the buildings right now, we've replaced approximately 900 light fixtures out there to LED fixtures, and we're doing that analysis to show that we reduced the wattage by approximately 40%. And that was something that we'll be reporting up through the Facilities Oversight Committee.
Ms. McCullough?
So I'm a little confused about something on this schedule, and I may need to make, ask for an amendment, so, and Mr. Rollins, perhaps you've had this conversation at Ops Committee. If you look through this school by school, so Nelson is not on their school by school, Cherry Valley's not on their school by school, White Swan's, well, we've already voted to close Cherry Valley, so White Swan's not on their school by school. But it says new elementary school number one, new elementary school number two. So I go back to my previous statement on, we can have one of two things happening at those sites, at Nelson and White Swan. You know, it's, we're going to do an addition, or we're going to do a new building. I hear Mr. Connor saying, well, we need to do plans, and I can see people getting out there and looking at property, and saying, which piece of property do we want, where do we want to build this new school, before we've actually, as a board, you know, hit the go button on that. By having in here new elementary school number one, new elementary school number two, I understand that you need a placeholder in the schedule, but it's not, it's not like a, it's like a done deal here in the schedule. It doesn't say, or addition. And in, you know, and as Mr. Connor's just said to me, you know, the public has been very vociferous in those areas, what they would like to see, and we would like to support it, as long as we're fiscally able to do so, but that's the reason we did the whole resolution and the facilities oversight, to make sure that we have all those eggs in a row, is that in the basket, whatever, as my mom used to say. So this doesn't reflect that to me.
So maybe the schedule should have a little asterisk by there, and it would be pending final board approval, or something.
It could be. I mean, I don't know what you're going to put up in those schools, because they are not included in this schedule, basically, is what I'm saying.
The motion on the floor is not to approve the timelines. What it's saying is to implement the previously approved facilities plan in accordance with the approved timelines. So there's no need to amend the schedules, because that's not what's really being approved. It's saying you can use those timelines to implement the previously approved facilities plan.
Any other comments? I don't have the coordinator call the roll, then, on the approval of the motion submitted. Did you have a comment, Mr. Schmidt?
I just have one comment out there. Just, can I have the motion again?
Coordinator, reread that motion.
The motion is to implement previous approved facilities plan in accordance with the proposed timeline. Is that correct, Mr. Rollins? Is that correct, Mr. Rollins?
Okay.
Just, could I have a clarification, then, too?
Sure.
The previously approved facilities plan does not have new buildings. The timeline has new buildings. They, they aren't the same. This is where I'm having a problem, and I almost want to vote no, because they don't-
So, vote no.
But, no, but we can make them align.
Well, the-
Can we not?
When we voted in August, we voted to amend the original facilities plan in accordance with the recommendations of the Facilities Task Force, which included these new buildings in its recommendations. And then we imposed some conditions on, on going forward with those two new buildings, but I guess I'm a little confused, because I would say that what we voted on in August would have included those two new buildings, subject to the contingencies that we imposed on them.
Okay, let's call a vote.
Kent, I'm sorry.
Mr. Schmidt?
I'm just making sure. Now, was to come out there, if something on the schedule is, or it's approved, where I have to bring it back to the board to have it approved prior to changing the schedule, because that was a conversation through the approved and the acceptance. I'm just making sure, so my project-
Do you want to answer that?
My team knows where they need to head.
From my understanding of what the motion is, is to implement it in accordance with the proposed timelines, you're not necessarily approving timelines.
Okay.
You're approving the implementation of the facilities plan.
Okay. Because clearly, stuff could happen.
That's right, yeah, right, exactly.
That, that we can't anticipate, we can't have a million timelines for every, every building issue that may come up that adjusts its schedule. Okay. I think we're ready for a vote. I'll have the coordinator call the roll.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
Thank you. Our next item is the career cruising contract that was presented to Ed Committee, is now back to the board. Is there a motion and a second to approve the career cruising contract?
So moved.
Second.
Move by Mr. Connor, second by Ms. Powers. Any questions or discussion? Mrs. McCulloch?
I would just reiterate what I said in my report, and that is, we had a conversation about this, and it came through the committee unanimously with support.
Right. Ms. Jackson?
So, this question may be for legal. When I look at this, it says that there will be this budgeted amount put in through the College and Career Department through FY '18. Will this then become a recurring contract as we vote on this, or how does this work? Is this just a one-year contract?
A recurring contract means that you already have a contract with the entity, which you actually do. This is expanding upon the current programs, and, yes, they would be anticipating that this would be a continuing program.
So, it is recurring?
It will be.
It will be.
It will be.
Okay, I'll have the coordinator-
So, not there. I have a couple of questions for Mrs. Weatherly. So, this will not replace the traditional way, kids will still be able to, if they need to register traditionally, right, with the paper, pencil?
Yes, that will also be available.
Now, so will they have a username and password? Is that how this works? Each student will be assigned a username and password?
Currently, each student already has a username and password with career cruising.
Okay, and so this won't change any deadlines with registration, it'll still be the same, right?
Correct. It will allow counselors to work with students one-on-one, minus the paper data piece that we currently have.
Okay, and then, because it's going to track students, is there, is informed consent required, or no, is that a part of this, since this will track students after they graduate, it looks like? Is that what this do, what I'm reading?
Um, no, the tracking happens through the clearinghouse, so that's already taking place.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
I just wanted to give you, I thought you did a great job of presenting this to the Ed Committee, I watched it on TV, and I just want to give you kudos for answering all the questions, okay?
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Not then, I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the career cruising contract.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Our third item is the interest-based negotiations consulting service with CEC. This was presented at our previous board meeting by Dr. Jarrett and Don Granath. Is there a motion and a second to approve the contract?
So moved.
Move by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Dr. Harner. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of interest-based negotiating contract with CEC.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
And our final action item tonight is the annexation at Jefferson High School. This was the land annexation that Mr. Schmidt reported on at our previous meeting. Is there a motion and a second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Dr. Harner. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the annexation at Jefferson High School.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we are now on to new business and other business, and Mr. Dotson's gonna do a presentation, I think, on Chartwell Agency.
Thank you, and good evening again. When we look at kind of how we approach our work in communications, we kind of divide it into kind of three distinct areas. There is a public relations function, which is the strategic management of internal and external relationships. There's a communications function, that's where our team tells the stories of our district through video, through social media, through our website, through blogs, through articles. And then there is a marketing function, where we promote our students, we promote our programs and our staff. In the marketing division, if you will, there is a line item for marketing and graphic design, if you will. That amount this year is $90,000. That is the lowest amount, I wouldn't look back to since 2010, that's the lowest amount that that, that has been, ever since it's been under my management, I've reduced that every year, our team has. We like that trajectory, we like that downward trajectory. We've been able to do that as a result of our team approaching our work in a much more quality fashion. We've been able to bring a lot of those services in-house, and as a result of realizing efficiencies in, in this line item, we have the opportunity to be flexible in terms of who we work with. That's what you have before you with Chartwell Agency. We feel that they can help us in a very strategic way in supporting our, what I would call a short-term marketing plan. The reason I call it a short-term marketing plan is because we obviously can't build a long-term marketing plan until the district finishes our strategic planning process, so those things need to align. So, if you look, as we look at how we move forward, we think that, as we look at our marketing plan focusing on those three areas of promoting neighborhood schools, our magnet programs, and our academies, again, we think this agency can help us reach some of those key goals. The other thing that we think that they can help us with, as we look at measuring our outcomes, looking at our return on investment, we think that they can provide us with a dashboard that will allow us to look at certain metrics in terms of who our messages are likely reaching, who those target audiences are, and are they effective. Obviously, that's very important to us, we want to track that over time. Hopefully, we can evaluate where growth occurs in our district, so that we can see what is working and what is effective. The scope of work for Chartwell is, I believe, in Appendix A, which kind of tells you what that scope of work will be, and I believe in Appendix C, kind of details some of the estimated expenditures. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Could you speak to a little bit more of how you think you might be able to measure the effectiveness?
Sure. So, one of the things, again, as we, as we look at this agency, helping us reach some of those, mark, those goals and our marketing plan, some of those objectives, one of the things we want to get better at is looking at, when we run these types of campaigns, where, where is our message being effective, in terms of who's likely hearing our messages, what messages are, it seems to be working? We won't be able to evaluate that until over time, to see kind of where growth occurs in the district, but, but we certainly have not, have been provided with those type of metrics in the past, so we think that we can, again, see who's tar, who, who we're targeting and who's hearing what we're putting out there.
And this is short-term, so it will take place before we redraw the lines in case we build new schools. So, I, I guess I just, you know, there's a lot of moving parts in our district, and so when you talk about growth, I, I, is it growth in enrollment, is it growth, I?
Absolutely. So, again, if you, when I talked about those three areas, so neighborhood schools, magnet programs, and academies, we feel that our team, our expertise can be used focusing at the micro level with our magnet programs and our academies, we get lots of feedback from those schools who really are ready to promote those programs, but in a, from a macro sense, neighborhood schools is a little bit, bit bigger, a, a bigger thing to achieve, and so we think that on a macro level, this type of program, I believe it's our, our kids' rock campaign will continue. We think we are in a position to be proactive in our district, we think we have some momentum, and as Mr. Rollins stated earlier, with our enrollment being flat, private school enrollment being down, we think we're in a position to compete for those families, and so we, again, want to, want to promote our, again, our district and promote our programs, which we think are, are good programs.
So, it's primarily through enrollment?
For those, I'm sorry, Ms. Powers, so specifically, the program, the campaign would run January, three months, so we think that's an ideal time when private schools are advertising, charter schools are advertising, we want to be out there and compete with those entities as well.
And we wouldn't have a read until next August, when there's enrollment?
Yes, potentially, we could be, yes, that would be the time when we would look at that.
And Ms. McCulloch?
So, I see as part of the consulting services that they're going to be working with the department, and we just approved the KMK, a recurring contract, so how will that also dovetail all the three?
That's a great question. So, again, with KMK, as you recall, our three, you had a three, you had a three-year contract with them, that ended this past June. Certainly, we've had a great relationship with them and want to continue, but their work will be in a much more limited scope, if you will, of work, at a much more reduced expenditure. So, where KMK, I think, how that will help us is that, one of the things, again, as I mentioned, though, at the micro level, those magnet programs, the academies, even though there are limited resources, we think that we can help, again, promote our academies, you know, we get calls from principals all the time, they want banners, they want, they want things in their buildings. Same thing with our magnet programs, as Dr. Jarrett and I go out and, and listen to, and listen to teachers in our schools, they're very aware, for example, in the, in the, in our Barber Language Academy, the teachers there really spend a lot of time talking to us about marketing their program, that, that they need, we need to do more in that area. So, we think that with those, with KMK, they can help us in that area, whereas, again, at the macro level, we think that this type of program can help us kind of promote the entire district, again, with those limited resources. You're very welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have one.
Oh, Ms. Jackson?
So, this is going to go outside of this area, right, Rockford? Like, when I see the series of ads that will highlight, where would they be in, like, Rockford Registry, I mean, other papers outside of this area?
Sure, so we, we want to advertise, you know, the region, if you will, so there are our local paper, there are other publications that, that advertise schools and school districts, so, yes, we want to, we want to expand our reach in terms of who sees some of our promotion in, in our ads.
Thank you. This will be presented at our November 25th board meeting for a vote. The financial audit, we heard about that already, that will be presented next board meeting. Our final action, or final item for other business was the board's request to have a discussion on the student code of conduct, and I guess I would just, we had this discussion, and it needed to be in open, and it is particularly related to secondary school expulsion decisions and direction that we might want to either change or look at, or whatever, for, to give guidance to administration regarding expulsion recommendations, so I'm-
For the new, for the new-
For the, for the new, the new code of conduct for next year. So, I'm going to just open the floor up to comments and thoughts on that, and what direction we want to go. Who would like to go? Mr. Rollins, are you, you ready?
So, I guess the way I'll frame it is, what we've noticed is that things that kids were being expelled for previously, they're no longer being expelled for, which is good from the standpoint that our expulsion numbers are down. So, I'll just say a couple of concerns that I've got. One is, rather than expelling them, we're doing what we call CPAs, conditional probation agreements with an alternative placement, and I guess I've got two concerns related to that. First, in the past, at least like halfway through the year, we have not had sufficient seats in alternative placement situations for kids that we wanted to send to alternative schools. So, if we take kids that would have been expelled before, and instead fill our seats at alternative placement with those, those kids, are we, in the middle of the year, going to be out of places, out of seats for kids to go to alternative settings? And sort of related to that, alternative schools seem to be used for two different things. One is kids who are behavioral problems, who are disruptive to the learning environment, and so we want to move them out of a regular learning environment to, to an environment where they might be more successful, but others are, are kids who, for whom the regular learning environment just isn't successful, and they may not be, they may not be behavior problems, they're just not successful in a normal learning environment, an alternative learning environment might be better for them. And tied into what I was just saying before, if we fill up all of our alternative learning spots with kids who otherwise would have been expelled because of behavior issues, are we making fewer alternative spots available for kids who just need alternative education environments, because the regular environment's not successful for them? And then, I guess my last concern is, it's, it's just kind of a deterrence question, and that is, is there a greater deterrence effect, saying, "You're going to be expelled for this," than it, than, than, "You're not going to be expelled for this, but we'll send you someplace else." So, those are my concerns.
Ms. Powers?
I guess I would just build on what Mr. Rollins said with regard to, you know, the, the way we are using alternative schools, and so for students that, you know, my understanding is, the concern is to ensure that we are implementing the program consistently and treating all students, notifying them, and they are all playing by the same rules. So, if we are filling our seats early in the school year, but later in the school year, it's a CPA with alternative placement, but there's a waiting list, and so the child can't go, and so then, what happens? The timing of that behavior, that infraction, the, the two students are not being treated the same in terms of their opportunity to be able to go to the alternative school. So, I am concerned about that as well, and co-mingling, if you will, those populations of students who just need a different environment versus students who are having behavior issues. I guess as we look to creating the code of conduct for next year, what I would really like to see as the first thing that the subcommittee looks at is data. That was not necessarily the case this year. We went through, and we did a lot of work on defining things and, and revamping the booklet, but I, I think that when it comes down to infractions, what really perpetuated this was that Mr. Vosberg made a comment at Ed Committee, something along the lines of eighty-seven percent of our kids that have continuous enrollment graduate, and so that's a pretty compelling state. And so, that's a pretty compelling statement for me. I'd like to know the context of, is that continuous enrollment within 205, or if I moved from elementary to elementary to elementary because my family is very transient? So, how does that affect my graduation rate? Is it as long as I stay in 205? So, I think that to get a better understanding of, first of all, what the data says about kids that we expel and what their reason for expulsion was, and we're primarily there, I think, looking at high school kids, but even then, for eighth graders who we know are on the cusp, and the transition to ninth grade is really, really difficult, how successful are they when we expel them the end of their eighth grade year or their first semester of their freshman year? Are they ever able to recover? So, I think that the data around the way we are currently handling our students, that we then expel and/or CPA should really drive what we're trying to do with our kids. And I know that Attorney Holdley indicated that CPAs are not a formal discipline code, so it's not tracked in the system. That concerns me, because we have a lot of CPAs out there, and to be able to understand how many kids violate their CPA, what kinds of kids are CPAs working for, I mean, that's a, that's a metric, and especially with tonight's, you know, the, it was disproportionate. We used to have a stack of expulsions, this big, and this many CPAs, and it is completely flip-flopped, so not tracking CPAs is concerning to me.
They track them for the individual students, and I'm sure Ms. Hyde Carter keeps a spreadsheet and certain data, but as far as being part of a student's record where you can pull it up from, from our, from the Sun Guard system, saying how many students have the CPAs, that's not part of the discipline. It's not considered discipline unless they violate it, in which case then the expulsion kicks in.
So, I guess I'd ask-
Or suspension.
That sounds like a process improvement to me, Mr. Weisman, wherever you are. There's got to be an empty custom data field out there that you can randomly use to trigger this, but, um-
Yeah. It's held in abeyance. The discipline is being held in abeyance, so they might be able to do something from a computer standpoint, but it's not a discipline.
I'm getting puzzling looks, so I was gonna-
I was just going to say, CPAs are tracked. They are in the system. And we did have wonderful data last year that we shared with you all. At every board meeting, we noticed that we had 232 CPAs last year, and we only had 12 overturned, and five of those were spent students. So, we did, we had really good data last year. So, we thought the board would be pleased if we brought those same types of cases to you this year on a recommendation for a CPA, as opposed to an expulsion, which is what you all agreed to do last year, anyway. So, the data is there, Mrs. Powers.
So, and that's where, though, I think to be able to break that down, because I'm primarily concerned about high school kids. Quite frankly, I'm middle school and high school kids, especially high school kids that we are trying to get graduated, and we have the academy model, and we are trying to get them all of those soft skills of filling out, completing resumes and all of those things. And they're not going to get that outside of, outside of our schools, and so that's primarily where I'm concerned. So, not that I don't care about elementary, but I, to be able to break those numbers down and understand exactly what's happening, like I gave the example of a kid that we expel them for the second half of their eighth grade year and their first semester of freshman year. We have talked a lot about how kids getting involved in extracurricular makes them more connected to the school and all of those kinds of things. Coming in its semester is tough. It's really, really tough. It's tough to make friends, it's tough to know the school, especially as a freshman. So, I know that we are addressing that in a transitions program for all eighth graders, but I think that for expelled kids, I'm just curious, you know, if we have the data that can help understand when we expel a kid, what that means. So, you know, making sure that we've got Mr. Vosberg's comment, you know, with all of the criteria and what that represents, to me, that's very compelling, to keep our kids, that unless they are a threat to themselves or other students, to keep them in our schools. But I, I'd like to see that evidence-based.
Can I just clarify a couple of things? Couple responses to Mr. Rollins and his concerns, which are very, very valid. The idea of filling up the alternative schools with CPA students, please understand that when we've expelled in the past, we've put those students in AltEd seats. We, we typically don't, the word expulsion would mean no assignment, no school, and so we don't do that, and we haven't done that, and so I don't see a distinction there. If we put a kid in AltEd through a CPA or a formal expulsion, they all would end up at the AltEd site. That was deemed most appropriate by administration. That's, that's not unique to Rockford. Other school districts do that as well, and I think from our standpoint, our number one objective is obviously to treat all students fairly, but also maintain a positive learning environment for our kids. If we look at the data, 98% of our kids will not be expelled or CPA'd. And so, we, when we do have students that make bad decisions, we want to handle that carefully and fairly, but also recognize that we have a 10-day window that we're limited to with, with processing an expulsion. We cannot put a kid out of school for more than 10 days without board authority, and under the expulsion process, there's, there's a chance, and that has happened in the past where we run out of the 10 days, and so that's not fair to that student or the 98% of the students who are doing what we want them to do on a day-to-day basis. So, the CPA has helped us resolve that, and if you look at our data, across our system, disciplines way down, 30, 40% in some buildings, 50% in some buildings. It's also reflected in our attendance. You saw in tonight's report, our attendance went up two full percentage points because we're suspending less students. We also see with, you know, comments by Sergeant Spellman and the work that they're doing, survey data in our five essential surveys, that climate in our schools is, is greatly improved. So, I think the CPA is just a piece of that. I think the work that Mrs. Hyde Carter has done, the work that our building-level principals have done, the work that the board's done to be consistent with the code, all those things have, have played in, and so I, I can understand the board's concern about CPA versus expulsion, but from the, from the administration's standpoint, we look at the outcome is the same. This is, we're going to put a student in AltEd placement. We don't, I don't, my experience working with kids, I don't think there's a distinction for the kid. That was a good, a good observation by Mr. Rollins about, you know, expulsion versus not expulsion. To, to a kid that's being removed from the school and put in AltEd, that's an expulsion, whether we frame it as an expulsion or we call it a CPA out of the building, they do not want to leave, typically do not want to leave their homeschool with their students and, and friends. So, I don't think that the kids make a distinction, and one would be more of a deterrent than others, but that's just my opinion. But I do think we do risk and do jeopardize climate in the schools if, if we're not processing these cases in 10 days, and that, that's a risk that we take on.
So, I guess that's where I would say, you know, of all of the expulsions for last year, how many times did the 10 days run out? So, again, that's a-
If it just happens one, if it just happened once, it's a problem for me, because what we're, what we're doing is telling a kid, you've created a offense that we deem unsafe, but because we aren't unable to process within 10 days, which is difficult, because there's a, there's a three-day window to notify parents, got to get parents to come in for a hearing, sometimes they, they can't make it, they reschedule it. We have to have the board documentation, we can't do electronically, so there's a delay there to, to get that in time for the board meeting. So, there's a lot of variables at play. So, it happens more than, than you think, and if it happens just one time, it's too many times, because we've put a kid back in a school and, and said, just hang tight until we get this resolved, and that's not a good way to do business.
Right. So, I guess for me, though, I'm wanting the data. So, if you can go back and for last year, tell me the number of times that the 10-day thing was, was a, an impact-
Sure, we track that.
That'd be great.
We can get that for you.
And then, I guess, shoot, I forgot the other thing. Oh, I know. What, so, how does having an expulsion on a student's record affect them and their ability? I mean, that's the other piece, is if a student is expelled from our district, they are not allowed to go to another district until they have fulfilled the terms of our expulsion. So, when we CPA a kid and they leave our district, there's, is there any heads up to the receiving district that this kid has had a pretty serious infraction in some cases?
It could be a violation of the CPA, and then it would no longer be held in the bands. I'm sorry.
If, if a student or a family made that decision to transfer, then that would be a violation of, the way the CPAs are written, that would be a violation, and it would no longer be held in the bands.
So, then the expulsion goes on their record, and so what does an expulsion mean when it's on my record? Does that affect my entry into college? Does it affect, what, what does an expulsion on my record mean?
Laura, do you want to answer that question? You want me to? Well, you know, students are required, Mrs. Powers, to complete applications for collegiate enrollment, as you know, and a lot of those applications ask students, have they been expelled from school? And students are asked to be truthful and honest on those applications, because it, once they do check that box as no, the actual university or college could actually retrieve those records with, if the student gives them access to it, and of course, they do have to sign a release of information. And once it is noted, they can actually identify, I mean, contact the state and determine whether or not that student was expelled. We have had students in the past that were expelled and could not, you know, they, they could not be accepted into Pacific Military Forces, they could not enroll in Pacific Schools because they had expulsion on their records. So, it is part of the student's temporary file here in the, in the district, but they can actually secure those records through the state. So, you know, it is in the best interest of the child not to have an expulsion on the record. And as I alluded to earlier, we had 230-something CPAs last year, and only 12 were overturned. So, that's a really, really good record.
I guess I'm going to throw my comments out there that, you know, you know, a part of me really feels that the CPA process that has been going on for, what, almost three years now, I think, Angela, is that right, that we've been doing CPAs?
To my understanding, the board has done CPAs in the past well over three years. We just actually formalized them in three years ago.
To me, it's been an effective tool, but there's another part of me that I have to say that there, there are times that students earn the right to be expelled by, by, you know, violating a code of conduct that is pretty serious. And, and so I, I don't want to, as a board member, allow students who are a threat to other students or to a disruptive class environment or an unsafe class environment or whatever. I think if that's the case, then they've earned the right to be expelled. I guess those are my thoughts.
Are you saying expelled as in not given alternative placement? Is that what you're saying?
No, no. I'm, I'm saying expelled with alternative placement.
Okay, and so what we're saying is, a CPA with alternative placement is the same thing. We're treating it the same way.
Right.
Okay.
And so, and so it has been an effective tool, yeah.
One component I would add as well is, one of the advantages of a CPA is that it is an agreement between the student and the parents and the building principal as part of that recommendation. So, there is a, an element of partnership involved in that in terms of, of coming to agreement, which I, I think can, in a very, very difficult situation, be a more positive outcome than what occurs in a typical expulsion process.
Mr. Connor?
A couple of questions first is, Mrs. Powers brought up something about a smaller group working on this. When does that work start? Anybody know?
The parent teacher advisory committee begins in January.
When that starts, will these kinds of conversations be a part of it? So, should we assume that this is the start of the conversation, and we're going to come back and revisit some of these topics, or?
Yes.
Okay. So, so the point is that what we're talking about tonight, it's not like we're making decisions or anything tonight. What we're doing is, we're bringing up topics, so I would assume that when the subgroup comes up, would it be fair to say that these topics would be listed and then essentially discussed, notes taken, et cetera, so that, I mean, that's our standard process on this, if I remember correctly?
That is correct, Mr. Connor.
Okay. I, I think the, the only comment then that I've got is, I, I think, one of the things we've talked about, that there are certain kinds of, if you will, offenses, I don't know what, breaking of the rules, that cause automatic expulsion to be a part of the recommendations from the local principals, and there are some others that are not automatically done, and I, if I understand correctly, a lot of the ones that are automatically done are really because of statute, and that's typically the driver, if I understand correctly, right? So, I think one of the questions that's come up, and one of the drivers behind this conversation is, are there things that are offenses that even though they're not dictated by statute, that we would give guidance as a board to say, these kinds of things really should be automatically done as expulsion? I think that was actually one of the drivers for the conversation, if I remember correctly. And so, what I would like to suggest is that one of the activities, and I, I mean, it's, it's already nine o'clock, and, you know, I, I think I can keep my eyes open for a little bit longer. So, I think the point is that, what I'd like to suggest is that if we have the organization of the topics, that if there are, for example, some lists that we would suggest as board members be added to the list of the mandatory, that that be something that we collect ahead of time, we can vet it, and then sum, sum of that out, because the one thing I'll say that I've noticed about the code of conduct is, because there's so much there, I really think that there's a lot of detail, and I know I get personally lost in it, and so one of the suggestions is, if we've got some big topics like that, are there certain things where we really should give guidance to the principals in a better way? And I think the other side to that is, it would be very important for the representatives, which I would assume that Mrs. Hyde Carter and Mr. Vosberg would represent in particular, I think it would be good for us to get a report card as a board on how well we communicate through the code of conduct, and I know I would certainly like to have a sense from the principals on what they think in terms of the effectiveness of what we're doing, and for that matter, it'd be good to hear from teachers, staff, and so forth. So, I'd like to also suggest that, doesn't have to be formal, doesn't have to be our life's work, but I'd like to suggest that we also get that, because I would like to personally say, I'd like that as part of my thinking when I evaluate the code of conduct, is what feedback do we get, and that would include parents, and not trying to make a lot of work for you, but I think it would be fair for us to get feedback on how well we're doing, particularly communicating. So, that'd be my-
Ms. McCullough?
So, when I got on the board five years ago, and we would get expulsion, sometimes it was two months before it came back to us by the time those hearings were scheduled, and, and so I think that this administration is doing a great job of, of moving things through, even though that 10-day window is very short, at least it has, you know, typically will come to another board. So, I just want to start with that positive. I also want to say that I can see some difficulties for administration and principals, is, and when I say administration, it's central administration as well as principals, because I think they're constantly trying to read the board. They want to do the will of the board, and so they're, some, over the past three years, I've seen us somewhat as a moving target with discipline. We want more, we want less, we like CPAs, we don't like CPA, you know, getting used to it, and some of it's fine-tuning, and I understand that. And to Mr. Vosberg's point, yeah, we really don't expel anybody. We put them always in an altern, we, I have never voted on one that we have truly expelled. We've always just placed in an alternative environment. I'll tell you where I have a problem with that in a minute, but I was one of the people that was resistant to CPAs, because I, I do believe that consequences can be a deterrent, and if students know that you can get away with something and still come back into the school, that it's more likely other students might gamble, so to speak, to, you know, to, but I like the idea of the collaborative, cooperative with the parents. That's, that's a great thing. I like the fact that we can move it through quickly, because you don't require a hearing. I like the fact that we can move it through quickly because you don't require a hearing. I'm going to go on a fiscal piece here and say that we do save quite a bit of money. I mean, if we look at the amount of time, because we do parcel out the hearings to, um, that's outside legal counsel and didn't, at one point in time, those are like running $500 or something by the time you meet and you write it up and all these pieces. So, um, if you look at the number of CPAs, okay, we had this last time and multiply that. Say even there's just 10 of them, that's $5,000 there, although there is in-house counsel time putting together the CPA. So, if we're going to have the same outcome in the end, to spend the time and the money, what is our, our cost benefit? Um, I, the problem, my problem with CPAs was the, um, safety of other students in the building. We were doing what was best for the students who deviated in their behavior, but we still wanted to see them in school and still have an opportunity, um, to be in a learning environment. There are some situations where the safety of the students, I, I mean, it's, I think it's really interesting if somebody brings a weapon to school, even a loaded weapon. I mean, we expel them, but we give them the opportunity to go to the alternative school. And when we talk about alternative schools, for anybody who isn't, doesn't understand, there's, there's multiple places that students go. They can go to the regional, they can go to one of ours, which is, um, our Ombudsman Program, um, the ILC for the high school kids, the Fit for Life for the middle school kids. We have Roosevelt. Um, but if we have elementary students under the grade, grade five, they just get homeschool tutoring. And that's been a deterrent for the board to want to expel anybody because we really don't want to see any students, um, sitting at home. Um, but I think about people or, or students who, with, with that safety issue, I'm, I'm, you weren't specific, nobody has been, so I'm going to be. So, we get a drug dealer and we give them a CPA and put them in alternative environment so they can go sell their drugs somewhere else. Um, are we doing a service to our alternative schools? And, and that's making a leap. Please, I do understand, just because they did it at one place doesn't mean that they're going to do it another, but there has been, um, there's a little bit of a history there. So, are there, I would also ask the question, are there any offenses that we want to see as expulsion, that we want to see as expulsion, that are true expulsion, that the students are not given alternative placement? Um, I think that's something that the board has to weigh in on. Um, I think two years ago, it was, we voted on a, a loaded weapon. Well, it's a few years ago. We gave that person alternative placement. I mean, already demonstrated by bringing something like that into a building. Um, and, and again, I want, I want to do the best for them, but there's a whole rest of the class, there's a whole rest of the building that I would like, and the whole rest of the district and all the staff, that I would like to, um, put it at the forefront of, of my concerns, um, for their safety. So, um, the drug dealing, the loaded weapons, you know, it, it, some kids, yeah, the pocket knife, oh, I forgot it, the Boy Scout, all that. We've been through all those. Okay. So, I understand that. Ms. Holdley, when somebody has expul-, expelled and it's on their record and they move to a new community or they want to go to a different school in this district, can they go to a private school with an expulsion on their record?
There's nothing in any statute that would prevent that. The likelihood of them being accepted at a private school is, um, pretty slim if they have an expulsion on their record.
And how about a public school?
Public school, no, not in the state of Illinois and, and, um, other school districts in other states may accept or allow that to occur, but I, I, I don't know all of their various statutes in the other states as to whether or not it prohibits. Here in Illinois, if we have a student from out of state with an expulsion, we cannot accept that student or enroll them in our school.
So long as we get there.
Unless it's over the statutory criteria of two years.
And we've also had students who've come here, we've enrolled them and took forever to get their information from another school and it turned out they had, had been expelled from elsewhere and that's why we didn't get it. We already have them in the system, so.
We do have, um, procedures in place now to, well, and we've done training as well because we should be getting the student in good standing forms.
Okay. Um, so when we have all this conversation, and I'd like to refer to Ms. Powers, one of the stats that I would, you're saying 12 out of, I forget how many there were, were repeats last year?
Two hundred and some.
Two hundred and some? Two hundred and what?
Thirty.
Two hundred and thirty. Um, I'd also like to know how many students we have that are repeat CPA, um, over the course of, I mean, because we're doing them for all the second, no, we're doing them all the way through. So, you know, I have my trimester done and my time's up and now it happens again. I mean, is it really a deterrent? Do they really stay on board? And would we give them another CPA? They, their time is up. They're, basically, they're, they're free and clear and now do they have another opportunity to get a CPA? Or do the administrators factor that into what they bring forward to the board? So, um, I, I, I look forward to all these conversations and we'll have to bring that back. This will be part of, you know, our meetings, it'll be part of ed committee, but, um, the, driving by statistics, but also let's look at the safety of the school, the whole, yeah, the school community.
Mr. Rollins?
I guess I just had some clarification questions because we talk, keep talking about expelling kids, but then sending them to alternative. So, let's just talk secondary. So, Mrs. McCullough had mentioned, so, there's Regional, which is a reference to the Regional Board of Education, which is a, a multi-county, uh, agency, which does operate an alternative school. And I've always understood that expelled students are from, all of the participating districts are eligible to go there. We operate our own alternative, uh, placement, which is ILC and Roosevelt. And maybe it's been my misunderstanding, but have we ever permitted an expelled student? Have we ever sent an expelled student to ILC or to Roosevelt?
No.
That was my, okay. So, that was my understanding. And so, by taking people who we expelled before and giving them CPAs, it is now possible to send them to ILC or Roosevelt. Is that correct? Thank you. So, I would, I would concur with, um, I think, what, well, I want to know what Mr. Connor was saying, what I think Mrs. McCullough was saying as well. Um, and, and I think that what Mr. Scravano said too, you know, there's a little bit of a psychological thing here too. There are some things, some categories of behavior that I should, I personally think are expellable offenses. And I think as a board that we should decide that. And if the, um, if the code does not require the administration to bring those things to us as possible expulsions, then, then maybe we need to revise the code at our, at our next go-around so that we at least have the opportunity as a board to say that these are offenses for which we think students should be expelled.
Okay. Ms. McCullough?
And, and one of the things that I meant to say too, this is another sort of fiscal piece, but when we expel someone and they go to Regional, we pay, um, and somebody would clarify for me, they get the ADA for the student and on top of that, we also pay a fee? Is that correct? So, it costs us more to send a student to Regional to have, than having them in our system?
We pay $30 a day for, for students that go to Regional.
Over ADA? I mean, and, and the state sends them money for that student also?
We lose that ADA, yes.
Yeah. Somebody help me with that number.
The ADA is the ALOP. That's different, that's a little bit different. So, we can assign a student to the ALOP program, they're not charged 30, we're not charged $30 a day, but they are going to collect ADA. Student that goes to the Regional program currently, we pay $30 a day. And I think we pay for transportation as well, right?
Yes.
So, on top, we do transport everybody to all of our alternative programs, correct?
That is correct. And I did want to respond to Mr. Rollins' statement about the students that are being sent to Roosevelt and ILC. Um, Mr. Rollins, we do distinguish between the students that the principals elect to go to Roosevelt and ILC. Those are the same students that were, um, they are, they were electing to go last year with the CPAs. The students who, um, were committing what they considered to be more egregious acts, they were sending them to the Regional Safe Schools Program. Um, so they're not actually at Roosevelt or ILC, they're at Regional, um, Schools this year.
So, and there have been times when Regional's been full too. And if we expel a child and there's no seats at Regional, we're not under any obliga-, I mean, we're not under any obligation to make sure there's a seat available at Regional. What if we do a CPA?
Well, that's one of the things that we determine before we bring the cases to board is what, what's our seat availability? And as you know, the board did purchase another additional 60 seats this year for the ALOP program at the Regional Safe Schools. So, we, um, are in much better condition than we were last year. And I just want to allude to Mrs. Powers' opening statement, how she said the cases have flip-flopped to more CPAs than expulsions, and that's what we want to see because the board in actuality was expelling the students but providing instructional services and paying for those services. So, what we did basically was place the expulsion in advance as long as the student's able to actually, you know, meet the terms of the agreement. So, now the student is being placed, you know, appropriately, whether it be ILC, Roosevelt or Regional Safe Schools, but not having an expulsion on their record, which is the key.
Okay. Ms. Powers, you had another comment?
So, I just wanted to clarify because, um, so is Regional Safe School, that is yet a separate program? So, there's the Regional-
There's the Regional Learning Academy-
There's ALOP.
And there's the Regional Safe Schools, and then there's the ALOP.
In addition to Roosevelt and Ombudsman.
That is correct.
When we talk about alternative schools or alternative functions, there's all of those.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Ms. McCullough?
I know it's hard to end on a positive with, with, you know, a negative conversation about expulsions and suspensions and all those things, but, um, I would like to kind of bring it back around to where you started in saying, and, and I think Dr. Jarrett supported it too, is, is we are making progress with trying to change the behaviors of students.
Yes.
And that the CPAs have been effective in doing so. And so, it, in, in the end, what we're looking to do is make our schools safer, um, make the learning environment a better learning environment. And, um, and, and so, that's where we're going. And we just want to make sure that the community knows that we're, have the appropriate amount of, um, rules and reg-, you know, policies in place, um, so that we can continue to do that and, and make it even safer so that people, because that's the number one thing is climate, is that we hear all the time, is climate, climate, climate. And so, it's getting better and we can only do, make it better by having these kind of conversations and making sure that we have all the, everything in place.
And I'll reiterate what-
Thank you.
Mr. Vosberg said about 98% of the kids that go to Rockford Public Schools have great behavior and are there to learn. So, um, this will, uh, allow the board to give opportunity in January then when the code of conduct is reviewed and, and we'll, we'll know that schedule. And you can attend the public sessions that you hel-, you hold at the schools where teachers and parents and, um, interested community members participate and give input as well. I've done that many times. I know Ms. McCullough and other board members have done that many times, so appreciate that. So, any other new business for tonight? If not, I'll take a motion.
Actually, yes. I don't know if it's new business, but when's the last time we had an update on the job shadowing? And if not, may we please get one, maybe in the weekly board update or something? So, that's a request.
Okay. All right.
Laura, please add that to the log.
Put that on the log, yeah.
And there's another issue that was brought to my attention. I'm not sure that we're not meeting the needs of our students perhaps with IEP. So, I was made aware of a case where a student was supposed to get speech and the minutes are being put in some type of folder for the student. Can we look into that and see what's going on? Letters were sent out. And so, the parent showed me a copy of the letter that there's a shortage of staff in that area and so, the child is not receiving minutes. I don't know how many other students are impacted by that.
We do have a shortage of the speech pathologists. We have been, um, in communication with the REA to expand our ability to use our, our staff rather than hiring, um, staff for after hour, after hours to provide those minutes. So-
So, that can legally be done then? The students not get their minutes met under the IEP?
We will, no, we will have to meet those, but at a later time because we just don't have the staff right now to provide the services.
So, then perhaps there could be an update on how many students are impacted and what it's looking like. I said the minutes go into a folder. I'm not sure what that means or how the parent accesses the minutes, if they are able to access the minutes, if there's a shortage. So, thank you for the follow-up in advance.
Sure. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. All those in, or second? All those in favor say aye. We are adjourned at 9:19. Thank you. Our next board meeting is November 25th.